Good evening, welcome to the October 3rd, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we have correspondence. We did get a letter from Michael Grace. It outlines, I think, some legal issues possibly with the, excuse me, Granite and Old Solar Farm. But I think we're gonna have to look into a little bit further. Does anybody wanna comment or talk about it?
Well, the gist of the letter is that the Board may not have the authority to approve a rooftop solar as we originally approved over the canopies at a parkland. And that's a threshold legal issue I don't think we've explored or examined or have. And so I think we need to refer that to council before we go any further on this. So we're going to hold off on signing the, certifying the resolution that we passed, which is our normal procedure, so that council, unfortunately not here tonight, can take a look at the legal issues that are raised and advise us as to what we ought to be doing in light of that concern that was raised by Mr. Grace.
Well put.
Agreed.
Anything else in the correspondence anybody wants to talk about? Excuse me. Okay, so we'll move to the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have the IBM EV charging stations. This is a decision.
Minutes?
Oh, yes, Jesus.
I forgot.
I went right past them. All right, so we have the meeting minutes of September 12th, 2022. I'm losing it.
So moved, moved to accept.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nice job, Nancy. Okay, back to IBM. This is located at 1101 Kichwan Road. Anybody here from the group? Do we hear from them or?
This is an offer decision, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Originally, I told them they didn't have to come because I thought we were just signing the plans and I forgot we didn't actually approve it yet. So I did mention that someone should come, but the resolution is pretty short and sweet. Just approving the EV charging station.
Did they review the proposed resolution? No comment? Okay.
All right.
All right, there we go.
All right, so in front of us, we have a resolution approving additional electric vehicle charging stations for the IBM TJ Watson Research Center. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Well, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you. All right, next we will can move on to the Dorchester Glen subdivision. Again, another decision statement. Location is 1643 Maxwell Drive.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Joe.
The last time I was before you, I presented overlay plan, which overlay plan, which showed two different alternates on house locations and driveway locations, which is this plan right here. And at the time, we talked about incorporating parts of this in the overall plan. And at that point, we made, we had, came to the conclusion with the board that we were going to change the, the plan to show these, the alternative for this lot here and this lot here and keep the house and driveway positions as previously shown for these two lots. The resulting plan is this plan here, which we submitted last week, and this demonstrates those two plans combined. And that, that's more or less what we decided on at the last meeting. We're hoping at this point to move forward with a resolution if the, if the Board so deems they're ready. And of course, we understand it's gonna be conditional because we have to go to DEP, but we can't go to DEP until we have an approval from the planning board first. And we do have testing set up with them in, in the meantime, but we were at least gonna have that, that brought out. And we know the final engineering has to be provided, a stormwater sewer and water.
And you saw the email from council?
Yes.
Any issues with that? Everybody saw that?
Did it get into the resolution? His recommendation?
It's not in the copy you have because that was written on Friday.
Okay, so we need to add the language. We can recite that.
Yep. Any issues from the Board?
No issues.
Robin?
Nope.
Nope. All right. First, we have a motion for the Dorchester Glen subdivision to declare lead agency.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a neg declaration in front of us. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thirdly, we have a resolution approving this subdivision titled Dorchester Glen subdivision. We have to add the comment, and I'm gonna get to the part here where it's pertinent from counselor. Approval should include that the deeds for the individual lots must include a provision that the responsibility for maintenance, repair, and replacement of the private road, street lighting, and the stormwater management system will be the homeowners in the subdivision. And this is from town council. And no issues with that.
Motion as amended.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Good luck.
Oh, there he is. All right. I need that one more time. Okay, well now move into the work session portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have a town board referral. This is from the MJM Development Corp. The location is 3232 Gomer Street.
Okay. That's not what I wanted. Okay. Okay. So this is the site 3232 Gomer Street, also known as the Carrigosian property. This is the site right here. It fronts on Gomer Street, and then it also has a right-of-way, a deeded right-of, a town right-of-way access coming from the south on this side of the property here, which you'll, you'll see that more clearly in the plan when I show you the plan. So as you can see, there are several buildings on the site. There's a, there's a residence, some smaller outbuildings, chicken coops and sheds, and a barn on the property also. As you can see, the front portion of the property is fairly open. As you get to the rear of the property, there, the property is wooded. There are two wetland areas on the property, one here and one here. This is the access road that I spoke of, coming off from the south, and this is the frontage on Gomer Street. To the south of the property, as you can see, there is the Ponderosa development, which is a townhouse-style development. It was based on a cluster, using the cluster formula that's in the town code. And as part of that, it's still considered half-acre zone, but with the cluster applied, which required a provision of 40% open space. So although what we're proposing matches in density, it's, it's a different, it's a different path to get there. What the applicant is requesting is a zone change to R3. And with that zone change, the access would be coming from the, the deeded right-of-way, which is off of London Road. It would come into the site here and tee off, heading in a westerly direction towards Gomer Street. We have eight single-family residences. Those are on three-quarter of an acre lots there, I'm sorry. Two-thirds of an acre, not, not a, not a full half-acre. Pardon me. So anyway, that would require subdivision and flexibility approval. As you go to the right, proposing 33 or 34 units in a townhouse-type development based on an R3. So the zone change we're asking for is an R3 for the rear of the property and a flexibility zone for the front portion of the property or the Gomer Street portion of the property. To get to the rear, we have to traverse the wetland at the, at the head of the wetland. Once you get into the clustered area, as you can see, there's a loop and consisting of six buildings. And each of them is, will have parking, possibly garages under. The idea here is to be senior-friendly as far as layout and construction. From a density point of view, everything is clustered towards the center of the site. If we were to do conventional layout, it would be a little more spread out, a little more into utilizing the buffer and wetlands as part of the lot area. So overall, as in the extent of disturbance, this might be a little less or equal to doing a conventional layout. Granted, the unit count would be less. So this is before the town board for a rezone, and the rezone being requested is R3 again for the front and the use of the flexibility standards for the, I'm sorry, for the rear part of the property and flexibility standards for the front. The Ponderosa State is right here. So it's adjacent to that, it's adjacent to this, this area where we're showing the townhouse style cluster. Sewer and water would, would be provided to the property.
Joe, that access road would come right out onto London Road, right?
Right.
And is that, is that a, is a existing paper road or is?
Yeah, it was, when that, when that was developed there, that was left purposely to access this property.
Okay. No access to Lily Court?
No, unless it's desired to have an emergency access. But no, there's no, no access to that. That's a private, that's a private road.
And currently, no access off of Gomer?
And no access off of Gomer.
And what are you in front of the Board next?
Sorry?
The town board?
For the rezone.
When?
Before the now.
Okay.
So this is referred, referred to you for input.
In the, in the back, the area surrounding looks like a similar use from what you're showing here.
Right, so that's Ponderosa State.
Right.
Right. So it's, again, that, it's similar concept and layout, but it was a different, different path to get there. That was done under the cluster formula, which is rarely used these days. And, and with that, it's still half-acre zone, the cluster formula is applied, but provides 40% open space. This is a little different path where they're looking for a complete rezone.
What would this look like without the rezoning? If you did the clustering, would you get the same number of units, same number of buildings?
That's something we'd have to apply. We have not, we have not tried that yet.
And what's to the north of the project?
The, north of the project is all half-acre zone.
Okay.
Should we see the alternative?
Why?
See what the alternative would look like?
Where the lettering is.
I was asking.
Section two and so forth. Is there any possibility of a connection into Ponderosa for, you know, emergency access? I can't see the layout.
Right, I mean, that is, that is a private road. So we certainly could do that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we certainly could show up to that. It'd have to be some cooperation with the, with the homeowners association there.
No, I didn't know if there was any anticipation, like Lily comes all the way up to the property line, if there was another
Right.
Behind where the lettering is.
Those are just all units.
The units go all the way, oh, okay.
And honestly, it was, you know, it was purposely left to connect to that, and I don't know why. But maybe that, that was, there was some forethought in, in that, that there'd be some kind of connection. But again, you're dealing with a homeowners association, so it'd be
I'd like to see what the alternative would look like.
On half-acre zone?
Yes.
On that, yeah.
On, doing, using the cluster formula, you mean, or, or conventional?
I think the clustering on the existing zoning would be something I'd like to see.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Okay.
And I, I would think it would be preferable to have a second access road. I mean, that's a, quite a number of residents that are kind of hidden behind one road, even if it's for emergency access, either off of Cordial or off of, Gomer would be tough the way it's
Joe, does the property have access from Cordial Road?
There is, there is a little piece of, a little piece of frontage right here. About 40 feet right there. It's not wide enough for a town road, but certainly a, an emergency access could be, could be put there.
Well, that's a good point. All right.
When we do a memo back to the town board?
Do we want to see the alternatives?
Yeah.
And the access?
Okay.
All right?
All right, and we'll come back to you with that?
Yeah.
Please.
All right. Anything else?
Have you also just thought about the recreation required in R3?
Right, so, I mean, we're gonna have to vet that out, but, but yes, we will have to demonstrate that, yes. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And the right next door?
Do you?
Yeah. Now it's the next door.
Thanks, Joe.
No, we're leaving?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're done? All right. Next, we have Dell Avenue Solar Project. Discussion of site plan and special use permit. Dell Avenue.
Good evening.
How are you?
How's everybody?
Good. Yourself?
Good. David Steinmetz from Zaren. Steinmetz here on behalf of Seoul Solar, along with my client, Eric Alves Desa from Seoul. Our contract vendor, our seller, Matt Matthews is here as well. We don't have an awful lot, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, to, to affirmatively present. We're gonna bring up a couple of quick slides. Suffice it to say, since we were last before your Board, we have been trying to make progress on as many issues as we can. We made a resubmission to the Board that, Robin has indicated, was referred out to various other agencies and committees. We have been working, our project engineers, TRC, are working on the SWIP. That is still not completed. It's about to be finalized. The planning department requested that we update our visual analysis from the visual analysis that was done when I was here eight years ago with regard to croton overlook. So we had been given additional view sheds to analyze based upon the methodology that was used back then. We have done that. That has been submitted. I believe that it's, it's under review. We are still working with our neighbor to, to our, I guess, south, a substantial neighbor who has counsel and has his own visual consultant. We're, we're not here to really report back on that yet because that has not been finalized. You may have seen, I know Robin did see, the neighbor's consultant has suggested protocols that should be utilized in conducting the visual analysis. We're reviewing that. We just got that, I think, on Friday, and we look forward to continuing, hopefully to work in an open and cooperative fashion with our, with our neighbor. We, we really want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, that we can cover the things that were submitted. I know Eric wants to walk through some of the material, make sure you understand exactly what we submitted. And we're, we're here tonight to see if the Board has questions about the site plan, the location of the solar arrays, what we have done, in really everything other than finalizing the visual analysis. We, we think we can check off a lot of the boxes tonight.
I just do want to comment, although he's not here, Jim Counsel said that he wants to be, make sure the comment is thoroughness, secret review, that the applicant should answer the questions raised by the town of Newcastle.
Understood. But is it by the town or by the neighbor in Newcastle?
He writes, town in Newcastle.
Okay. We have a
Is there a comment in specific?
He's just said, he said that they answered.
I'm sorry?
I said, maybe some misnomer, maybe, maybe.
Because
We did get a memo
We did, and we did respond, right? We, we have a, we, we did submit a comment response log, and, and we're gonna walk you through that briefly tonight, but I'm not sure whether Jim has something in particular.
Maybe you guys could touch base.
That's fine. Certainly happy to reach out to Jim and make sure. We, we thought we, we thought we had, had hit those issues. We do know we received a comment about visual impact from one neighbor at Random Farms in Newcastle. We know that that has, that has to be addressed in terms of our visual analysis. But let's walk through a couple of quick slides, and then we can have a discussion.
Yeah, and I have to say, the, at least the drawings I saw that were presented looked fantastic, the work they put into them, so thank you. You know, we've been, I think, very consistent about trying to make these things invisible as per the code, and obviously someone did their homework and had really nice drawings.
Right.
So thank you.
Really appreciate hearing that. I really appreciate you saying it.
Nice work.
Again, my name's Eric Alves Desa, project development manager with Seoul Systems, the applicant for this project. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight. We're grateful to be here tonight, thankful of the opportunity to be with the Board and move things forward. We can flip over, this is, again, is just a reminder of where the project is. I think you guys all know that, so we'll, we'll flip one more forward again. I'll just, I'll hit on that first question from the town in Newcastle, just to mention where we are. We had received, because of our proximity to Newcastle, our plans were shared with them. We received a letter from them, I think with five or six comments. Most of them were not applicable or no further action. One of them specifically was to share the SWIP with their town engineer when the time was right.
Once it's finalized.
And the other one was to consider adding to our line of sight profiles, a visual impact from three Random Farms neighbors. We've since provided that back to the planning department. Can you comment if it's been shared with?
Do you know if you sent it, Robin?
Actually, I take that back. We have not provided those yet.
We, you showed me sketches of what they would be, and then we agreed that they should probably just be added because then later I did actually get the contact from the neighbor.
You're totally right. Last Friday, we finalized those. They're ready to be issued, but we haven't we haven't hit send yet.
Right.
Correct. So then, as soon as those come over, they can be shared with the town in Newcastle.
And Eric, just for the chair and the boards, you use the same methodology?
Same methodology, yeah.
Excellent.
We just kind of have three reports now, right? Because you have the initial one from 71 Hog Hill, and then you have the one from a couple of years ago that we revised, and then now we're gonna add a couple from Random Farms, so
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll get them all together into one.
All told, it'll be 15 line of sites.
Yeah.
All of which are finalized just in three different places right now.
Robin, just on that comment, which was half in jest and half out of jest, you want one comprehensive, you want it all combined together at some point?
Yes, that would be helpful.
I thought that's what your comment today was. Good.
No, but we're just, you know, working on each one of them separately, kind of trying to get them done, so that's fine.
Okay. So all in all, again, we put in like an initial submission back middle of June. We were in front of the planning board here at the end of June for just kind of an introduction to the project. It's been about three months since. There's been a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes, both at Seoul Systems with the utility and with TRC, our engineer. The site plan that you're seeing in front of you, this is again just an overview of the property and kind of zoomed away, but the site plan is essentially all set. We're almost pencils down on it. We are at 30% civil engineering design set. And with that, we wanted to use this opportunity to just essentially provide an opportu, provide a chance for there to be any comment on the site plan before we continue to like progress things forward. So on the next slide, just as a recap of where the project is, since that submission, you'll see a lot of words on the slide. Don't pay attention to everything, but I want to focus your attention on what's there in orange text, because everything that's in gray or black text has been completed up to now. So as far as comments received, here's a full list in the top left of each of the reviewers and entities that we were expecting to receive comment from. It's worth noting that we aren't, we don't know if we're gonna be receiving comment from the planning board specifically, so they're not listed there. But if at any point there is gonna be a memo coming from the planning board that either consolidates the comments from the others or provides us feedback perhaps after this meeting, it would be interesting to, you'd be useful to know that.
Okay.
With the engineering department, again, we understand that the comments are primarily gonna be related to the SWIP. The SWIP was submitted September 1st and is with New York City DEP and with the York Town Engineering Department to provide initial comment and do what's called a determination of completeness. Last week, we received comments back from New York City DEP. I honest to goodness don't know if, if we will receive anything from the engineering department yet, or if we incorporate all the comments from DEP, submit for final review, and at that time, York Town Engineer and
And I tried to grab Dan, I didn't, I did not get a chance to grab him. I turned around, he was gone, so I will reach out if anybody knows whether Dan has begun his review or how he intends to do it. We want to make sure we coordinate with Dan's office.
It might be a good idea just to get together with all the professionals in the office, sit down, and just, you know, hash out any issues that
Right, that's a good idea.
Yeah, always helps.
Perfect. The comments that we've received to date total 25. So in our submission from September 21st, that's included in the packet for tonight, we've addressed 18 of those. The last two items, the letter from the environmental consultant, Weston and Sampson, and also the request to add the Random Farms VIA came in after our submission. So we have seven new comments commented on. That'll be sent over this week. So where we stand right now is that we have no unaddressed comments. And I did want to pose the question of, what does the comment resolution process look like? Do we, are we expecting comments again from each one of these bodies on our comments? Or does it go forward in that it's with the planning department or the planning board to essentially consolidate and be a little bit more?
I, I think, I'll see if I can kind of summarize it. I think Seoul is used in other municipalities to a very formalistic type of process.
It's true.
And with
Look.
Hey, lock the door and don't leave. You know, sometimes if you wish hard enough. I think, I think what Eric and, and my client need to understand is that it may be a little bit more of a fluid, less formal fluid, less formal concept and process with the board, but in some, what what Seoul is trying to understand is whether there's gonna be another round coming either from the board, from from Robin, John, and staff, or or from some of the other agencies, since this has been referred to conservation and trees, et cetera.
So I think you're gonna get, and I'll let Robin speak to the process, but at least on our end, once everything's in, like the the view sheds from, once there's one package, I know that's one thing that we're very concerned about.
Understood.
Right? That's the one guiding principle that we've been, you know, I think everything else kind of complies. Obviously, Dan Ciarcia, town engineer, is gonna look at it from his perspective, and the planning department, obviously, from his, and they're gonna take everything and put it together. But I'm sure we could get a memo once everything is in. But I do suggest that you sit down, Dan, Robin, the group, and just work through any of the issues.
Okay.
More of an informal, and then we'll button it up, if that makes sense.
Okay, great.
Any comments?
Good news. You could advance them if you wish.
I gotta tell you, though, again, I love seeing great presentations, and you guys really did your homework here. It's it's refreshing.
Appreciate it. This is, this is our standard. Again, this this has a lot to do with what we mentioned in the past, Seoul Systems and our approach to solar. We are not just the developer that eventually sells it off to somebody else to manage and maintain, who then eventually sells it off ten years into it, having recruited the tax equity credits, et cetera. We we are here for the whole length of the project, and um we care very much about the communities that we're going into and building solar.
You'll get to see Eric age throughout the lifespan of this project. It's gonna be great. So Rich, we've had the public informational hearings, just in the idea of potential comments.
That was closed in the end of July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have yet to have a public hearing.
So that would probably, once we get the full package on the view shed, I see Robin.
Oh, I was reading the conservation board comment was a site visit. Did we?
I don't think it's been conducted, if it's been conducted, I don't think we were told about.
No, no, so that's our next quadrant in the top right.
We were going to ask if we could schedule any kind of site visit that your board or anyone else needs to conduct.
We should, yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, we were hoping that we could, at a minimum, open the public hearing, um possibly in the month of November, and and leave it to the board at that point to determine when it's appropriate to close it. But if there are, if there are comments from the public that are above and beyond just near view shed issues, we'd love to know. We haven't really heard much, as I think your board knows.
Right.
We think a lot of even the view issues can begin to be addressed even before every single leaf is down. By the time we get to the public hearing in November, I I'm feeling that a lot is down.
I mean, that's gonna be the critical part about this, right? Every solar project comes in, people are worried worried about the way it's gonna look. I mean, we've had quite a few of these come before us, and that's been the overriding concern. I think if you continue on that path, you know, you're gonna have an excellent presentation by the time you get to that. I have no problem setting the the public hearing.
I think absolutely, we should set a public hearing now.
Yeah.
Things have been going off for like eight years, is it?
Well, it was, I remember doing the site visit when I, when it first came.
You were a Boy Scout.
This project, thankfully, not eight years. This site, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Robin.
Yeah, we could do that in November. I would expect that we would be a little further along with some of the visual, just because that's what a lot of the public want to talk about, so we want to have more of a report to present before we get there.
So
No one's gonna complain about traffic for this one.
Agreed. So we agree with Robin. We 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 know
No analysis on Del Ave.
We know we're gonna have to, that that's gonna be a big topic, and as I've said, and and being totally candid, um you know, our neighbor's council is here. We know that they've got some concerns about how best to do this, so we're gonna be working directly with them over the coming weeks to see if we can come to a meeting of the minds. If the board has any, um, there's not a lot of guidance provided in your code as to exactly what the standard is supposed to be and how it gets applied, let alone with properties of this size, both our sixty-five acre site and our neighbor's, I don't even know how many acres, forty to fifty acres of neighbor property.
Thirty-four.
There you go. Thank you. I was off by fifteen. We, there's a lot of woods out there. There are a lot of trees out there, and um we're 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 gonna work through that as best we can, but but Rich, if you and the board have any, I I've had a conversation with John already about.
I I think, you know, that old adage, we're from Missouri, show us. I think that's every one of these applications that has come, it's been the same.
Got it. We definitely want you to come out there, because I think, I think even if you come out there before every leaf is down, and you see below the tree, below the leaf canopy, just how wooded thi- this area is, I think you'll get a pretty good sense of
What's going on? The property also dips, right? So you got a hollow in there. Is this where the the solar is gonna go?
Yes.
You won't see it anyhow.
That's
I mean, I mean, we can go and look, but if you see a dip in a property, you know where it's going.
I think it'll help people, you know, especially with the concert, you know, others that are gonna be concerned about. Once you go out there, I think it's important to have a joint site visit.
With joint between your board and conservation?
Yeah, we could all schedule so everybody goes out at once.
That's fine.
But I
And TRC will be available too.
Okay. And certainly meet with the town professionals, so that, you know.
Good. We will do that. We'll take care of that.
That's most important.
Great. And as it relates to how far along we are before we go in front of the public, in the public hearing, from our perspective, we wanted to also use this time to understand, is there more than just the VIA, the visual impact and line of sight analysis with a bit of written narrative that's already been provided, that you would want ready for that public hearing?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you was, you said you already provided it.
Yeah, we have.
We've provided.
I I I think his question is, is there anything, is there anything besides what we've provided, pushing the visual assessment aside, that you all think needs to be in front of the public for that hearing?
Conservation Board may.
Yeah.
Tree, tree mitigation stuff, right? I mean, that's
Dan, on your end?
That's all been provided.
Right. I'm just saying, that's the other hot button.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, they're before the DEP on the SWIP, so the DEP does a very rigorous review. So if there's gonna be another iteration of the SWIP after they've taken a bite at it, we'll take a look at it then. And then obviously, the, I don't know if these guys have been to the tree commission yet, so that'll be a whole
That'll be a
Other process. I mean, I think that'll be another big discussion.
We had a meeting with the conservation board over Zoom, but I don't think it was specifically with the tree.
Yeah, so that will have to get
I don't think you've met with the tree commission. Is that a
Get set up.
Will somebody schedule that, or are we just gonna get memos? I didn't think there was actually a meeting that would be scheduled, but maybe I'm mistaken about that.
The tree commission does meet, I think it's next week.
Do they have applicants appear, or they just do their own thing and review what we submitted to them?
No, I don't think so.
They do review it on their own.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So
And Weston and Sampson provided their their letter that specifically went through the tree mitigation plan and the calculations for the
So it sounds like we have a shot at getting more comments from the tree commission after their meeting next week, which we can be prepared to address at the public hearing, maybe even submit something in advance if we need to, or we'll address that at the hearing.
They do a very thorough review.
Yes.
Um, and you might want to look at some of the prior applications. The foothill one was, you know, certainly one that might help you at least get a mindset for what they're gonna be looking.
Robin, can you share that with us?
Sure.
With all the visual impact
Sorry. We also have another meeting before I would have to notice anything for November, so we've got plenty of time.
That's fine, we have plenty of time. Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, I just said November, because I thought that was more, we're not looking to do a public hearing at the end of this month unless the the board felt that way.
Yeah, I think it's
Especially with the tree commission meeting next week, I'd like to know we've gotten that taken care of. And it gives us a little bit more time to work with our neighbor on the visual protocol.
November fourteenth would be a great date.
Not that we were suggesting anything.
October seventeenth.
Might just schedule it, why not?
Too late for this October, anyway.
November fourteenth. Go to the next slide, it might just be there.
Proposed.
Go to the
But with the, with the visual renderings that you've done, or not renderings, but the line of sight analysis, which is tremendous, of all of those, which is the one that you believe people would find the most, I don't want to say obnoxious, but the most in your face? Because our goal is usually to try and hide these things in plain sight. Now, the reality is, you can't necessarily a hundred percent screen anything.
Right.
Right? I mean, a neighbor could put up a flagpole that you don't like, and you can't do anything about it, right? So, I mean, just in your opinion, is there any one particular view that you think is the one that would cause the most anxiety or concern?
The most anxiety is gonna be the view on Del Ave. But I think you have very few people and very little traffic on Del Ave. The the views from a distance, there are, a lot of the distances looked at are quite long. So I, it isn't three pieces, right? There are, there are the views from the Hog Hill neighbor that we're working on and don't need to comment on here, and we're gonna continue to address outside of the public hearing and within the public hearing. There are views, the three views from the Random Farms neighbors that have not made it to your desk yet, but have been completed on our side. Each of those views are greater than a thousand feet.
Yeah.
The vast majority of which is through trees, leaves on, leaves off, we're fully confident, especially with the topography looking slightly up.
Right.
There's no issue from the town of Newcastle.
Quarter mile of mature trees in the mid- in the middle of us.
Okay. I appreciate your saying that.
Rob, just see, even even with our other neighbor, we're we're at the closest point, two hundred feet from the property line to the array, and mo- most of it's probably five hundred feet to the array, and that's from the property line. And and the good news is both our property is heavily wooded, and our neighbor's thirty
Four.
Four acres is also quite wooded along the outside.
Right.
So we think we've got, we've got an ideal location to work with, we believe.
Each of the views that were included in the original Croton overlook VIA, ten-foot solar versus thirty-foot tall homes.
Right, sure.
Yeah, the original plan, I remember, was, you know, very linear and
There are two new residences on Evans Drive and on, I think, Pines Bridge Road that are closer views from what was originally a line of sight analysis from Teconic State Parkway or from T-Town?
Yeah.
Maybe?
They were from really far.
Not a local.
Both of those are quite a distance away.
And those are still quite a distance away, and if you're looking from the homes themselves, one's blocked by topography, and one is again through trees.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Do we, do we want to set a target date for when you might want to do that site inspection?
Or we'd have to be in touch with the conservation.
Yeah, we'd, we'd reach out probably to tree commission, everybody, just
I would think we should do it towards the end of the month. That way we can get the as much of an open condition that that was mentioned in the memo.
Early November as well. I mean, that's
That would probably be best.
Right.
Why don't we do it just before the public hearing, a week before?
Makes a lot of sense.
Do it like the first week of November. Because the public, they We could, yeah, we could schedule it on the fourteenth and do it on the seventh.
Good.
Okay. We'll communicate with Robin and John, um and we'll, I think that makes a lot of sense sometime around then.
Okay.
Really appreciate the enthusiasm.
No, it's a, it's a nice, you did a nice package.
And and part of the reason for it is, we've got everything else wrapped up outside of this, so I it is worth noting, like the the four bullet, the four, the list of four at the top, there's five things when it comes to any any solar project. Site control, we have our our lease with our property owner, interconnection with the utility. We've paid that deposit in full, and we have an agreement with Con Edison. Incentives, so we have our community solar incentives uh in place. And over the last month, we have narrowed down and selected our EPC, engineering procurement, construction contractor that's gonna be performing this job. So with the site plan essentially finished but for SWIP comments and comments on our comments that we've provided thus far, and or any new ones, really what we don't want to do is kick off into thirty percent electrical design, have Con Ed go all the way through their detailed engineering for the work that they're gonna be doing outside of our project fence, only for there to be a surprise that we didn't know about, because we didn't have enough touch points and and communication with the town, so
What's your, what's your target date? I know, I, you, do we have a target date where we were hoping to begin work, based upon?
Construction.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's the kicker there at the end. Uh, end of March is our tree clearing deadline. That's six months away, but as we all know, six months can fly by very quickly, especially when you have Thanksgiving, holidays, end of year. In between that, so that's, all the trees need to be cleared prior to April first because of the Indiana bat and its roosting period. So
That's a, that's a deadline that we're at least, we're keeping in our, in our sites.
That would create a six-month blackout, to which we couldn't clear trees and
So I think you're on the right track with us. Obviously, if any neighbors do come in and have concerns, obviously that'll concern us. So I would just keep proceeding the way you are. Meet with town staff, you know, any of the neighboring issues, try to resolve, because I think, again, the public informational hearing makes everybody aware of it. You know, we've had, clearly in the last few months, we've had other public hearings where we're very well-attended, we'll say, so people do take note of that. I think it is a good process York Yorktown has. So I think you're gonna, the neighbors that are concerned, obviously, are out, so I think those are the ones you really gotta
Got it.
Yep. Okay?
All good.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Too short an agenda for you guys tonight.
Listen, Steinmetz just sent me a text that he did all the engineering plan.
You weren't supposed to read that out loud, Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gentleman wants to, uh
Oh.
Yes, this is Mr. Davis regarding seventy-one Hog Hill Road. I I just wanted to
Can you come forward?
If you could.
If you, you might as well be heard by everybody.
Hi, it's Clifford Davis. Uh, I'm I'm counsel for seventy-one Hog Hill Road. I just want to make sure that my submissions, which I sent to John, Nancy, and Robin, were passed on to the board.
We have them.
Which we included a protocol, and, okay.
We do have that.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. All right, that's the last one. Take care. Do we have motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Not bad, I think.
I didn't do as good as you did. No, you had the record, though. Yes, you did.